Good afternoon and welcome to the August 20th, 2012 council meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation today offered by Pastor Wesley Beecham from Orlando Baptist Church, which is located at 500 South Cimarron Boulevard in the Monterey Homes area of District 2. It's been part of our community since the year I was born, 1958. Pastor Beecham has been with the church for five years and the congregation is active in the community, hosting neighborhood block parties and cleanup activities, mentoring at Stonewall Jackson Middle School, sponsoring youth sports league. The church annually holds a fall festival and an annual hero day honoring local heroes in our community. After the invocation, we'll be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Patty Sheehan, District 4. Everybody please rise.
It's an honor and a privilege to be here today to pray for you guys as you guys lead our city and our area around our community. We get to do a lot in our community, our church, and we're thankful for you guys for allowing us to be able to be a part of that with you guys. As I was driving here this morning or this afternoon, I realized you guys have a lot of responsibility, and understatement probably, and we're glad that we get to come alongside of you guys and be there to help you guys. We know that we can do what we do in our community. Our commissioner, Commissioner Ortiz, helps us a ton, and we're very thankful for you guys. I'm reminded of the parable of the Mayoral talents. One master gave his servant ten talents and another, he gave another five, and another one just one. The master said, "I'll be back in years and I'll see what you've done with what I've given you to do." The one he came back when he'd given him ten talents, he had doubled the talents, the responsibility. The other one with five, that guy also doubled the responsibility. The one guy that he gave the one talent to, he went and buried it and hid it away, and when he came back, he had nothing to do. And I realize you guys have been given many talents and abilities, and you guys have done so much for our community, and we want to thank you as Orlando Baptist Church, and thank you for what you guys continue to do. Let's pray. Jesus, thank you for allowing us to have many responsibilities. We thank you for our leaders, our mayor and our commissioners that would lead us and guide us, Lord, and for our community, from city to city, from county to county. I realize there's so much responsibility that has to be done, and you've given these men and women and leaders an opportunity to lead us, and we're thankful for them. Our prayer should give them many years of doubling the talents that you've given them to use for our city. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of it. Our prayer that today's meeting would go the way you had it planned. Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Lyman.
Here.
Commissioner Ings.
There.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's take up for approval the minutes of the July 30th, 2012 agenda review and council meetings.
Show move.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Everybody would take out their cell phones and turn them to silent or completely off. I would appreciate that. All right, let's move into awards presentations and recognitions, and I'm going to call on Tim Johnson for the first presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. The American Institute of Architects was founded in 1857 by thirteen architects in New York City. The goal was to promote and elevate the profession of architecture. Today, the American Institute of Architects represents over 100,000 architects, associates, and allied professionals abroad and here domestically. I'm here today to introduce three of our members, formerly was two, three of our members who will make a presentation on behalf of AIA Florida. They are Dan Kirby with Premier Cities, who is the president-elect of AIA Florida, Nathan Butler with CT Shoe, who's the secretary treasurer of AIA Florida, and Mr. Mike Langerfeld of Langerfeld International, the past president of AIA Florida. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Tim. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here before you today and in our city where we get to celebrate leaders and people that love this city and that strive to get it right. You know, talent and skill aren't always enough. Sometimes you need a champion. You need a dedicated and committed champion, and we're here to, glad to be here today to celebrate such a champion that serves as an example here to us in our community, around the state, and also around the nation. As Tim Johnson said, we're here with some of the leaders of AIA Florida and AIA Orlando. We represent a community of architects that works to create a built environment that serves as an inescapable physical manifestation of our hopes, our dreams, and our values as a community. We rely on partnerships with leaders, with clients, with community builders such as your shelves, who share our vision for a better Central Florida. You may know that AIA Orlando launched a successful bid to bring the AIA National Convention here in 2017. We're expecting more than 20,000 participants to gather here and celebrate architecture. We're expecting an economic impact that will be between $25 and $35 million. You may also know that each October, AIA Orlando celebrates Architecture Month in Orlando, and you've partnered with us on that as well. Despite some of the hits that we've taken as a profession due to the economy over the last several years, we are emerging with strength and even more determination. In fact, right now with over 500 professional and allied members, AIA Florida, or AIA Orlando, rather, is one of the largest chapters, it's the second-largest chapter of AIA Florida. Last May, the University of Central Florida graduated its very first class from the architecture program, and this month, some 20 students are pursuing their professional degrees, their Master of Architecture, at the University of Florida's City Lab, which is in our creative village. AIA Orlando members are also playing leading roles in the Orlando Architecture Foundation, and on the horizon, we foresee a new regional center for architecture that will serve as a focal point for engaging the broader community, including public officials, students, visitors, and others in discussions on what it takes to make a great community and how to get there. The leadership and influence coming out of Orlando goes beyond Central Florida, and it's quite evident statewide. As AIA Florida celebrates our 100th anniversary, we're particularly proud to have a focus on Orlando. Here with me today, representing AIA Orlando, are the 2011 AIA Orlando President Hank Wolf, please stand Hank, and our executive director, Karen Jones. I'd also like to ask another two gentlemen that are here with me today, Michael Langerfeld from Langerfeld International. Michael Langerfeld is a fellow in the American Institute of Architects, and he was our 2011 president of AIA Florida. Also joining us here, part of this presentation, is Nathan Butler. Nathan was, is not just the secretary treasurer of AIA Florida, but he was recently elected to be the 2014 president of AIA Florida. So in four years, you've got three presidents coming out of Orlando to lead the state organization. Nathan is a principal in CT Shoe and Associates, and they were a driving force in making this nomination for the award that we present here today. Michael and Nathan?
Council members, Mayor Dyer, I just want you to know that it was a privilege to chair the committee as the immediate past president in the selection of the Bob Graham Award. The Bob Graham Honorary AIA Architectural Awareness Award is given to an individual citizen or public official who is not an architect and who, by their interest, activity, and concern for the profession of architecture, has advanced the cause of good design and planning and contributed to the dignity and value of the architectural profession. It seems ironic that a previous recipient of this award is in the audience today, Dr. Sandy Sugar. So you are in good company. Nathan?
Mayor Dyer, the Bob Graham Award is certainly not something that's given lightly, and we held our state convention just last month, and we were fortunate to have Bob Graham present at the convention to speak with us, and he confessed to us his desire to come back in his second life as an architect. He has a very strong passion about design and about architecture in particular, and he also shared with us his passion for good leadership, for visionary leadership, and for good citizenship, and it was something that, it was a message that resonated with all the members, all the attendees at the convention, and I think would resonate with everyone here in this chamber today. So we're very pleased to confer this award upon you. We nominated you, Mayor Dyer, for this award to recognize the consistent and the strong leadership that you have applied to advance collaborative visions for policies and projects that are transforming the city and the region truly into a world-class urban center. Your efforts have positioned our city for diverse growth into the future while providing tangible evidence of the powerful effect that thoughtfully applied design can have on the growth of the community. And for us in particular, we certainly appreciate the emphasis that the city and that you in particular have placed upon utilizing local design talents and bringing a national perspective in order to move the needle in the positive direction. So we truly appreciate your efforts, and it's an honor to confer this award upon you here today.
Let me just, in response to that, say that I cheer this award with the entire council because whatever vision has been put forth through the mayor's office has been in conjunction with the city council as we strive to make the best urban environment in the whole state of Florida and the entire country. So thank you, council members.
You're welcome. Commissioner Ings, don't get any ideas about having people presenting awards to you guys. I know what you are thinking. All right. So now we come to one of the fun ones, and I'm going to call on Lisa Early to make some introductions. Lisa?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city commissioners. I'm going to be really brief. About a year ago, you approved an agreement with Boone Braves Rowing, Inc., to call Turkey Lake, the boathouse there, the dock there, their home. And what this did is really helped bolster and support the crew program at Boone High School. And so the group that's here today has spent their first year out there, they have really worked hard to make this a successful program and achieved some great successes. So their purpose today is just to celebrate their first year as Boone Crew here at city council with you today. So on that note, I'm going to ask Victor Jordan, who's president of Braves Rowing, Inc., and Stephanie Spinelli, who is the sponsorship chair, to come up and speak to you today. Victor and Stephanie.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, city commissioners. It is our honor to be here today. Good to see you all again. Lisa already introduced the concept of our visit, but if I may, I'm going to just say a few words. A little over a year ago, we came in front of you to apply for the lease of the Turkey Lake Boathouse and rowing facilities at Bill Frederick Park. At that time, Boone Crew had experienced what seemed to be insurmountable challenges, but with the hard work and dedication of this group of incredibly dedicated parents and student athletes, not only were we able to save Boone Crew, but once again, we have become a very viable scholastic rowing team in Central Florida. A week from today, we begin our 28th rowing season, and we want to thank you for your support during our rebuilding year. We would also like to recognize one of our team members, Jesse Pollard, who is here with us today, who selected the cleaning and painting of the boathouse as well as the rebuilding of the Ortiz as his Eagle Scout project, together with Troop 283, as well as some of his teammates. This project has been successfully completed, and the boathouse looks fantastic. Please come and check it out next Saturday, the 25th, during our annual recruiting open house. I will now show you a brief photographic chronology of the events that depicts both the challenges we faced, as well as the thrill of completing during the 2011-2012 rowing season. As you can see, this is what we found when we came to the boathouse last year. Actually, that is a pretty cleaned-up picture. We were very fortunate that the City Parks Division acquired this 100-foot dock, which has made it possible for us to continue to row at the park. Here's a picture of all of our kids working hard, getting the boats in and out of the boathouse. Parents at work have rebuilt the racks that were removed, and we continue to build more as our equipment grows. We also, as you know, have a middle school program. We serve many of the middle schools that will feed into Boone High School, and here's a great picture of them rowing last year in one of their regattas. Here are some of our high school students rowing, and here's a sample of the Boone Crew flag that we use and display when we go to regattas across the state and outside of the state of Florida. When we go to regattas and sometimes win, sometimes we don't, but it was a rebuilding year after all, we celebrate, and we, you can see here, our coach and many of our rowers celebrating one of those victories. They're hard to come by, but they're well-celebrated. Here's another picture of a celebration after winning a race. So that was our 27th year, and we're looking forward to year 28 in the 2012-2013 season. We would like to thank you again for everything that you have done for us, supporting the team, and we will continue to row hard, row fast, row Boone. Thank you very much.
I'm going to ask all the students and everybody from Boone to come up for photographs, and Ms. Spinelli has memory books to give out to each of the commissioners.
We should have it signed by all of them.
This is neat. I imagine they've got one like this.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please? Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Lyman.
Here.
Commissioner Ings.
There.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Commissioners, as a proud graduate of Valencia, I am most grateful to have this opportunity to present my current president of my alma mater, Dr. Sandy Sugar. In 1967, Valencia opened its doors whereby providing a quality education to hundreds of students on Oak Ridge Road. At that time, the school was made up of trailers. When I got there, Valencia was located on Kirkman Road. During that time, the college was, the college only had one campus and was comprised of three buildings. Today, the college has seven campuses and centers throughout this region, providing educational opportunities for over a half million students for the past 45 years. During the same time, over 100,000 of us have graduated from Valencia. It is, in my opinion, our city is a better place to live and work, due in part to Valencia. Many of our citizens and city workers are proud graduates and students of Valencia. We thank you, Valencia. Dr. Sugar, please join me at the podium, if you would, for a few words, then followed
Well, Mayor Dyer, members of the commission, thank you for the attention you give us from time to time. It's our great pleasure as a college to serve what we believe is the best community in America, and you don't achieve the kinds of rankings that we've achieved without being nourished by a community that's great. So we're a reflection of your aspirations and your investment in us and our communities' hopes for their children and their future lives. So on behalf of the 1,500 or so full-time faculty and staff at Valencia, and another lord knows how many thousands of part-time folks, faculty and others, I say thank you. Today, we brought with us a little something for you as well. There are two things there. One is a piece of propaganda. We had a study done earlier this year on the economic impact of both the college and our graduates on our region, and we were surprised, actually, by some of the results. That documents nearly $1 billion in annual impact on the region. We're one of the top 20 employers, but most importantly, our students' investment in their education pays dramatically, both for them and for the local economy. And the second, if you open it, this looks like a big fat pen, and it is, with a Valencia moniker on it, but it has also a laser pointer in the back of it. I wanted to give you that so that you would know that we are focused like a laser on this community. That's right. And particularly on connecting people to great employment in this community or to a future through our wonderful partnership with UCF and the rest of the state university system. So thank you for your attention. Thank you for your support and friendship, and we enjoy working with each and every one of you.
I have a proclamation from the city of Orlando. Whereas on August 27th, 2012, Valencia College marks its 45th year of serving Orange and Osceola Counties, having grown to seven campuses and centers throughout the region, offering credit and continuing education to more than a half million college students in its history. Whereas more than 100,000 graduates have earned degrees from Valencia College, and whereas more than twice as many Central Florida-area high school graduates who go to college do so at Valencia College than all other state universities combined. Whereas every dollar students invest in tuition at Valencia College yields an increase of $5.60 in their income, and whereas Valencia College's overall economic impact on the region exceeds $1 billion per year, and whereas Valencia also significantly contributes to the enrollment of the University of Central Florida, where 22% of UCF graduates last year were also alumni of Valencia College, and whereas Valencia College has garnered national acclaim as the inaugural winner of the 2012 Asprey Prize for Community College Excellence as the best community college in America. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, hereby do proclaim August 27th, 2012, as Valencia College Day in the city of Orlando.
I just want to make sure, is anybody here from Keller Williams for their, for the next presentation? I didn't see, they might have gotten the date wrong, so.
Is that president?
Is there anybody here? I don't see anybody. We'll go ahead and have that another time. Thanks, Mayor. Thank you. I love Leo, but he's consistent. He probably got the wrong day.
She never gets it. She's in trouble more.
I know, it's all good.
Thank you so much. You guys don't want to wait for the mayor's update?
All right. It's, yeah, you can pull it up on the internet later on.
All right, Commissioner Stewart, I don't want you pointing that laser in anybody's eyes. I see you wanting to do that. Let's move now to the mayor's update, and today, we have some exciting news for a city of Orlando company, Nephron Pharmaceuticals. Commissioner Stewart, I know, was wondering why I had this little contraption here. They are announcing a new over-the-counter alternative to the discontinued Primatene mist inhaler, and it's called Asma Nephron. And for all of you parents whose kids have asthma, or if you have it yourself, you may recall that Primatene mist was recently removed from distribution by the FDA, and this new product from Nephron will provide a much-needed relief for those who usually rely on a nebulizer. Nephron reports that the product will be in Walmart and CVS later this month, and commissioners, you'll recall that we worked closely with Nephron as they built their new facility out in Orlando, and we are pleased to see their continuing success, and we like to brag on Orlando companies that are doing something that are very notable. So congratulations to Nephron. This morning, I joined Chief Rooney and the OPD to assist in school crossing guard activities, and I'm happy to report, everybody got to school safely. Commissioner Ings at Metro West Elementary, where they have over 1,500 students at an elementary school. I think they're probably the largest in the county, and this work long is an effort to raise awareness about pedestrian safety and traffic laws. With school starting, we want to be extremely aware of children walking along roadways and bicycling to school. We also emphasized Operation Best Foot Forward. OPD officers were at schools, warning drivers who failed to yield for pedestrians at crosswalks, and this very high-visibility operation is going active. For about a month and a half, we were just giving warning tickets, but now we will be giving the real McCoy. Staying with OPD, last Thursday, we had the annual Kicks for Guns, 14th year, and we had a record total of 1,333 guns at 13 locations, and 36 guns were illegal guns. Last Thursday, I joined members of our senior staff at the monthly I-Dignity event, and we try to participate in that on a fairly frequent basis, and I-Dignity provides assistance and aid to, I guess there were about between 200 and 250 people last Thursday receiving Florida ID cards, licenses, birth certificates, social security cards, and other documents. And then last Tuesday, I joined NBA City to kick off the construction of the club at NBA City at the Amway Center's newest destination. Now here are some really good news items off of the agenda. We have four items on our agenda that could bring as many as 348 new jobs to the city of Orlando. Under Economic Development Number Five, we are approving a business assistance program agreement with New York Diner, which is a new restaurant near the airport. They plan to create 55 new jobs. The business assistance program offsets a portion of their impact fees. We are also approving three incentive packages to provide local financial support with the state of Florida. Under Economic Development Item Number Four, Benicard Services is a full-service prescription benefit administrator that includes mail and specialty drug dispensing. Benicard plans to expand its services to include Medicaid Part D prescription drug plans beginning in January of 2013. And due to the expansion of services, they anticipate the need to hire 159 new employees over the next three years, and 24 will be hired by the end of this year. They have facilities in New York and Pennsylvania, and we are honored that they are considering putting their facility near the Mall of Millenia. And I would like to acknowledge Rich Terranova, the CFO, and And I would like to acknowledge Rich Terranova, the CFO, and Bruce Shear, Senior Vice President of Operations, who are here with us today. Gentlemen? Under Economic Development Number Six, Clearview Systems is currently headquartered in Orlando and manufactures and distributes baseball and softball equipment. Commissioner Ings made reference to this item in our agenda review meeting. The company realized it had specific software needs that could not be obtained from any software providers, and therefore created its own software. And, uh, they plan to construct a new forty-thousand-square-foot building on L.B. McLeod Road and create a hundred new jobs over the next three years. And I want to acknowledge Matt Polstein, President of Clearview Systems, who is here with us today, as well as Tracy Turk, who's a project manager from the EDC, who worked with our staff in both Benicard and Clearview projects. And you may recall last year that I went to Israel on a trade mission, and it continues to bear fruit. Uh, I'm happy to announce that an Israeli company, Mazor Robotics, Inc., which currently markets and distributes the Renaissance System, which is a miniature robotic system about the size of a soda can, um, that can be used for several medical applications, including spine surgery. And you know that Florida Hospital is, um, has great expertise in that. This robotic system is transferring spine surgery to a more accurate procedure with less radiation. Mazor began selling the product in the U.S. in two thousand ten, and today, Florida Hospital is the only children's hospital in the State of Florida to offer the Mazor system. And Florida Hospital Celebration Health and Florida Hospital Carrollwood are the only hospitals in the state to offer Mazor robotics for adult patients. So, it seems natural that Mazor is considering placing their U.S. headquarters at Florida Hospital's Health Village, and the company plans to add thirty-four jobs over the next three years. And this is a testament of the value of creating targeted and strategic international relations. So, we are very pleased to welcome Mazor's U.S. headquarters to Orlando. Finally, the last thing I don't want to mention on the agenda is a fifty-three-thousand-dollar grant from the National League of Cities with a two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen champ. Cities can, cities combining hunger, combating hunger through after-school meal programs. It'll help expand the city's summer feeding program to children year-round. With that, we'll move to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council, and we give each of the Commissioners an opportunity to comment on the consent agenda, and we rotate who goes first. So, today, that is Commissioner Patty Sheehan, District Four.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and I'd like to thank the Carol Adams Group. We did one hundred and twenty-eight backpacks for needy kids at Reeves Terrace with all their backpacks, the supplies, everything they needed to start the first day of school and probably the first quarter of school, all the supplies that they needed. Want to thank Carol Adams. They've been doing this for eight years now, and they have not scrimped or anything like that. They've done the full backpack program, and we really want to thank them. They're a wonderful corporate sponsors and took care of every one of our kids residing in Reeves Terrace. So, we'll really, really thank them for that. Um, on the agenda today, want to, of course, shout out to Benicard, QTI Millenia. That's just a wonderful District Four, uh, we welcome you to District Four and look forward to working with you. Um, on Item D-one, Experience Works Hiring Seniors at the Beardall Center. This is a federally-funded program that helps seniors find work, so we're glad to host that at the Beardall Center. Um, Item D-three, the, the grant from the National League of Cities Champ Program for Combating Hunger, that's a wonderful thing, making sure that needy kids are taken care of. And After School All-Stars does a wonderful job, as well as Paramore Kids Zone in taking care of these, um, very needy children. Um, on Item D-four, the Friends of Lake Yola Agreement. This is fundraising for parks, for park improvements at Lake Yola Park. Want to thank the Friends of Lake Yola for offering to step forward and fund the necessary improvements and additional things to the park that could be beneficial to our citizens. And this is a great agreement, allowing to do some fundraising on our behalf, and also to place those improvements too, with working with the FPR staff. So, I want to thank them as well for working with us. Um, on the Safer Grant, twenty-four positions, six for Veterans' Preferences. Great to see that. And even though it's on new business, I really want to say thank you so much for the Trust for Public Land, um, for the, you know, for the purchase of Lake Yola properties, so that we can add one point three six acres to Lake Yola Park. I mean, it's just amazing. Greg, thank you. Trust for Public Land has been such a wonderful partner with us in the City of Orlando. They helped work on the Orlando Urban Trail, which we just opened. And y'all do so many great things for people. I don't think people realize nationally how much you really do to secure public land and help cities finance it and work through these prop, you know, property acquisitions and everything like that. It's a very involved process, but we thank you so much for everything that you've done for Lake Yola Park and the City of Orlando. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, we'll move to District Five. Commissioner Linehan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, pass me that Nephron thing. I'm not so good with my, my, um, asthma today, but boy, my allergies are kicking up here. I don't know if somebody has on some perfume or something. Is that for, um, you've got to work on the allergy part of that. Just a few announcements, that we always like to speak out and give kudos to everyone in just a few. Uh, but first, I'll mention the passing of Clarence Spinks, a longtime citizen of Orlando, who did quite a bit of work for, uh, he was a landscaper, did a lot of work for the City of Orlando, uh, many, many, many years ago. Uh, he died at ninety-one, and I want to say a real special thanks to the Fire Department because he died in a house fire in my district. And Chief Kneller called me that night, and I was just so thankful for all the work the Orlando Police Department, uh, did for that family and, and all the neighbors that came to, uh, help. So, thank you very much in acknowledging this. And I know that's part of Reggie McGill's family, so I said, "Thanks for Reggie, for all that he's done." Uh, also, I think we've since had the National Night Out, and again, we missed about four in District Five. Even though we started early and earlier, it is just so hard to get to so many of them. But I am so thankful for all the attention we give to National Night Out because of just the increase in crime and even petty things that are happening in our community. And we are our brother's keeper. So, thank you, Chief Rooney, for the work you do, and of course, Officer Williams for the work he does in District Five. Uh, one of the fir- newer neighborhoods was Stack Home Villers, that we have sponsored through the years through our Housing Department, and I was very, very proud of their effort at National Night Out. So, um, we have to say kudos, uh, is that Palmet? No, is that Palmet?
Yes, that's Palmet.
It is? Okay. To the things that we've done over there with Habitat for Humanities, um, to keep that beautiful place going and the additional development. I know Callahan Oaks is going to dominate, is dominating the agenda today, but, uh, Callahan Oaks is one of those unique situations where the city owns the property and there's another developer and private operator. Uh, we've had these great relationships with Onyx through the years. We've also had that same kind of relationship with Orlando Housing Authority. So, when you see those agreements, um, and we can get HUD dollars to upgrade them, it's a great thing, it's a good thing. And, uh, I'm very, very thankful, um, for the, um, upgrading we're doing through Onyx. Bob Ansley told me about it when we were at National Night Out, uh, over at, um, Palm Grove Gardens. So, we want to say a special thanks. I also had the opportunity to speak on Friday for Disney's, uh, sponsorship of the North and Central Florida, um, Minority Suppliers Council that Mr. Malik Ali sponsors, and Ms. Ali has been a great partner with us through the years. And it was great, being a speaker, to talk about our blueprint and the great success he acknowledged through the City of Orlando and our minority participation efforts. So, um, I want to give them a shout-out, and if you're thinking about my bling bling, that's where I got it from, is Disney's. Uh, and I, I love this jewelry, um, and it's, just makes you feel very feminine when you have on a lot of bling. So, um, I'm wearing mine today. My first one broke within two seconds, so this is a backup ring. Um, also, congratulations to the Magic for a great back-to-school event and for Jones High School. We all worked so hard to meet the gaps and fill in those gaps for so many needy families, um, but we are very thankful to see all kids going to school, have their supplies. And I know most Commissioners really do quite a bit of outreach, um, through our offices and through other organizations. So, I want to say a real special thanks to the Magic, who's a great partner with us all the time. And announced today that on September second, for those football fans, we're going to have the MEAC SWAC football game at noon time, uh, September second, at the Citrus Bowl. It's Bethune-Cookman University and, I don't know who else they're playing, but I know they're going to be there. Who?
Alabama State.
Oh, okay. Whoever that is. Uh, Bethune-Cookman University is playing, so whatever. Um, thank you, Ms. McGill. Appreciate that. But, um, those are my announcements for the community, and, um, congratulations on all the other things, including you, Mayor, recurring the Architectural Award. Our city has really been moving progressively and aggressively in building a new face and giving ourselves a facelift and new characters, so, uh, congratulations. Uh, just a few announcements on the agenda. Um, mostly, it's about Callahan, so I'm very, very thankful for that. But on Agenda Item G-three, it is the Florida Classic, that is Saturday, November, either the sixteenth or seventeenth, whenever that Saturday is. And this is a great partnership we've had for a number of years. It is a great, uh, economic impact to our community, so we look forward to seeing everyone there, and so thankful to Steve Hogan and his crew for this partnership. I'm to meet the interim president, I think, this week or next week, I'm not sure what that date is. But, uh, we do a great job, and, um, for the Police Department, the Fire Department, our Code Enforcement, all of us working together as a city, family, to make that successful and to have that economic impact, which means jobs for other, everyone else. Also, want to announce on Agenda Item H-two, we're having Turning Up the Heat fundraiser for Karen Long, another fundraiser, at Planet Pizza, uh, tomorrow from eleven a.m. to three. It's only ten dollars. We are really working hard with the Police Department and so thankful, Chief, for all your work over there, uh, to make sure this young fighter, um, gets the resources she needs in combating cancer as she makes her trip to Germany for a treatment. Please come out, and if you want to donate and you can't get there, uh, give the donation to any police officer, I'm sure will get it over to her. Uh, it's Karen Long at Planet Pizza, uh, tomorrow, just here in downtown on Washington Street. Um, I want to say a special thanks to the Fire Department for the addition of fire hydrants, um, in Lake Lawn. I believe we got those in Collin Cove, because in Collin Cove, about three years ago, a house burned down because we didn't have sufficient, uh, fire hydrants to go into the back of that community. And, uh, I'm, I was very happy to see that on the agenda. Other items, I've heard the Mayor go through, so I won't be redundant, even though I don't mind being redundant, I just wanted to tell you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Bob Sinler used to say, um, "It's all been said, but it hadn't been said by everybody."
Commissioner Ings.
And with that said, Mayor, I'll go over, uh, and congratulations on your award for the Architectural Award, and it was really great, uh, seeing, uh, the gentleman here with that, uh, because it does mean a lot for the City of Orlando. And thank you, too, for acknowledging the Commissioners, uh, being very supportive of you on many of the projects that go forward, uh, here within the city. And, um, my second annual Red Tie Celebrity Golf Extravaganza occurred Friday, August the third, at Shingle Creek Golf Club and Resort here in Orlando. And this is the, um, golf tournament that provides, uh, opportunities for me to do several different programs with a specific focus on nurturing our children and embracing our seniors, uh, in District Six. And thank you, some of our local celebrities that participated. Uh, Commissioner, City Commissioner, Orlando City Commissioner Jim Gray, District One, uh, Commissioner Robert Stewart, District Three, Commissioner Patty Sheehan, District Four, and of course, Mayor Bruce Mount for the City of Eatonville, and, uh, Orange County Commissioner Scott Boyd, Frank Billingsley, Chief of Staff for the Mayor, uh, OPD Chief. Thank you, Chief Rooney, for being out there. And, um, Congressman Ellen Grayson stopped by, and, uh, we had a filmmaker, Tyrone Young, National Film Maker, Nikisha Sales, WNBA star, Tree Rollins, NBA basketball legend, Bo Outlaw, NBA Orlando Magic, Chris Leek, formerly of the Gators, uh, now quarterbacking for the Orlando Predators. Uh, he had a great time there, and Jay Love, comedian, that's with, uh, Fox News Early Morning Show, and then Miles J., a national, an international singer. Calvin Lewis, former NFL linebacker and retiree, uh, Darcy Johnson, who retired from the New York Giants, and Kim Herring, and that was Commissioner Sheehan's celebrity, along with her group, and they had a fantastic time with him. Uh, Kim Herring is formerly with the Cincinnati Bengals. And of course, Tim Johnson, uh, not our Tim Johnson here, but, uh, Tim Johnson, that's a local pastor here in Orlando, but he's retired from the NFL, and he played with the Washington Redskins, and, uh, he played on that Super Bowl team with quarterback Doug Williams when they, uh, won the Super Bowl. And then, of course, Nick Anderson, NBA Orlando Magic, was our featured speaker, and, uh, Jay Love with Fox Entertainment was our comedian and master ceremony at the awards nineteenth hole celebration. And Mayor, the first-place winners.
Nephron.
Nephron Pharmaceuticals. And they actually defended their championship because they were the first-place winners last year. But the foursome included Ben Cohen, Hunter Gordy, uh, Graham Grimesstaff, and Will Dutley. And of course, their celebrity was Tim Johnson, formerly of the NFL Washington Redskins. And our title sponsor for this year was Universal Orlando Resort. Uh, they repeated their title sponsorship. Thank you so much for that support. Now, other sponsors included Nephron Pharmaceuticals, The Golf Channel, SeaWorld Adventure Park, Commissioner Patty Sheehan, International Drive Master Transit and Improvement District, Profumeland, which is a company here in Orlando off of International Drive, and been here for seventeen years, and they're running a fantastic business there on International Drive. The Solar Bears, thank you so much for your support. Coca-Cola, Airtran Airways, Fun Spot Action Park, United Trophy, Costco. And thank you, uh, Usler Group of Companies and Russell Athletic Bowl, the Central Florida Lincoln of Orlando, thank you so much for the Hole-in-One Car, and then Cox Media Group, CMJ Resources, My City Goffs, and Inspire Me. And of course, a very special thanks to Frank, Frank Billingsley, uh, who was really there on hand to help out and be a part of this event, and, uh, Barbara Gross, Maurice Hampton of the Smith Center, June Marie Ings, my wife, Renee Jackson, uh, Brenda March, Denise Moore, Mike Pavelko, Marlon Potey, Robert Spindler, Herbert Williams, Jr., Rodney Williams, Akiva Wilson, and Cynthia Wilson. And of course, Mayor, thank you for your letter of support, and it really made our booklet look very well. And then, as we celebrated National Night Out on August the second, um, at the Dr. James R. Smith Center is where we got started, and that was building bridges to our future National Night Out celebration. And that was at the Dr. James R. Smith Center. The Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity hosted this event, and the team captain was Vladimir Shafri. He's the president of the local chapter. And the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority and the Lake Hall Lodge, number thirty-three, Prince Hall Affiliates, the Masons, were key participants in this event as well. There were eighty-five kids in attendance, uh, boys and girls ages from eight to fourteen. And the event focused on the youth, and they, we talked with them about crime prevention, education, and voting. Food, drinks, and desserts were provided by the Olive Garden, located at seventy-three-hundred West Colonial Drive. And they also had their staff that was on hand with them, too, that served the, uh, young children, and, uh, many of their managers were there, too. And the gaming area was provided by OMG, um, their, uh, for the, uh, mobile event coordinator was RJ Clark. So, this was a great event, and, um, we really supported our National Night Out, and we had, uh, first-place winner for National Night Out with Metro West Golf and Country Club, and our third-place winner was, uh, Calver Shores. And so, congratulations to those homeowners associations for their great, uh, support of National Night Out. And then, we had our District Six, Seventh Annual Crime Prevention and Awareness Walk, and also- And then we had our District 6, 7th Annual Crime Prevention and Awareness Walk, and also we included this time a health fair for the kids. And this was the 7th Annual Crime Prevention and Awareness Walk that was held Saturday, August 11th. And Unity in Uniform, a nonprofit organization was responsible for maintaining and helping provide the health fair that was held at the Dr. James R. Smith Center, and this benefited many families and children. Schoolchildren from grades kindergarten to 12th grade participated in the walk. They received book bags, school supplies, and a bagged lunch. As a matter of fact, we gave away 800 book bags for all of our kids, and many of the kids came and participated in the march and walked with us to the Smith Center. The parents with their children were able to participate in the free health risk assessments that were coordinated by Unity in Uniform, including blood pressure, glucose checks, physicals, HIV testing, chiropractic checks, hepatitis C education, and CPR demonstrations. And we had CPR demonstrations with the young children. We had them on the ground, on the floor with mannequins, and they were practicing CPR even at an early age. And we also had Florida's blood centers that provided the big red bus for the blood drive. I also gave blood that particular day. And many thanks to Demetrius Denard, Howard Gentry, Maurice Hampton, Lydia Hobbs with Unity in Uniform, George Jordan with the Rathman Club, Mike Pavelko, Marlon Potey, the center manager for the Smith Center, and Officer Tia Pruitt, Dr. Winston Warren, also the Unity in Uniform, Dean Smith with the Unity in Uniform, Herb Williams, Akiva Wilson, and Cynthia Wilson. Also, L. Bethel Temple at Orlando provided volunteers and assisted with registration. The Rathman Club assisted with the food distribution, and the Young Blacks in Actions provided our entertainment for that particular evening. And with that, Mayor, that's all I have, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to District 1. Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of exciting things going on in District 1, and I would refer everyone to our website on the city webpage. Everything from National Night Out to backpacks for kids going back to school to after-school All-Stars, et cetera, et cetera. But it's all there on that website. I'd ask you to go there. The only item I have is on today's agenda under the new business item. I need to declare a conflict on the city's exercise of our purchase option at Lake Yola. It's a conflict for me, and I will not be voting on that item. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Alana, you'll duly note that.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I really like Commissioner Gray. Straight to the.
So do I. Thank you. I'll go ahead and go.
We have much to learn. We have much to learn from him. All right, well, mine will be a little longer. But anyhow, on the agenda, I want to take this opportunity and, copying Mayor, I want to congratulate New York Diner for their acquisition of the grants and providing 55 new jobs to our local area. So, congratulations. I'm really looking forward to come over and visit with you, and I know I'm going to recruit you into the summer business partnership, so, thank you, guys. We really appreciate that. I want to go ahead and take advantage of this opportunity and also congratulate the Orlando Police Department, who's always looking for great grants to provide our officers with good equipment. And I believe we are applying for another grant for 39 portable radios. So, thank you, Chief. That's great. On items of the district, on Tuesday, August 7th, I visited most of our parties during the National Night Out celebration. We had the Police Department, thank you for providing, for the Police Department officers and different units that visited our Neighborhood Watch Parties. And for the firefighters to come, for also coming over and spending some time with us. It was a great event. I want to thank the Anglerwood Park Homeowners or Neighborhood Association, Dover Shores East Neighborhood Watch Program, Lake Barton Village Neighborhood Watch Program, Dover Manor South Residence, and last, but certainly not least, the Wingwood Apartment Residence and Management Company for warm welcome and hospitality. On August 10th, I joined the Ecuadorian American Chamber of Commerce at the Lake Yola Park in front of Simon Bolivar, bossed in celebration of their 202 years of independence. It was a great event, very emotional, and there's much to be learned from different cultures we have around all the Americas, you know, South America, Central America, and North America. And this was a great event for us to share some of our cultures. So, I want to thank all the participants. It was a great event, and we keep working together. And I have, let's see, on August 10th, we had the back-to-school repetition, giving back 200 backpacks to the children of Dover Shores Summer Camp and 200 to the Anglerwood Neighborhood Center Summer Camp. And I want to thank Bright House Networks, Orlando Federal Credit Union, Resource Management Incorporated, and Orlando Magic for supplying backpacks and the resources to buy some other backpacks. It was a great event. Those kids were so happy. These backpacks also contain supplies. They had notebooks, pencils, and all kinds of things, all kinds of goodies. So I know there was a lot of parents that were very happy, because that provides some economic incentive in the sense that they don't have to spend their money, and that's great. We're all helping each other. Now, I have to speak about my mission to Columbia, the first mission after the Free Trade Agreement was signed and put into effect in May 15th. And I have to say that we have discovered the Eden, it's called the Eden, the airport in this particular state. They don't call it states, they call them departments over there. In this particular state, the state of Quindeo, or Department of Quindeo, has 12 municipalities. And they're so much like us in a sense of their centralization and access to the different venues around the nation. What's most interesting is, I went over there, I was invited by the Armenian Chamber of Commerce, and I gave them a presentation about Orlando and their fascination about Orlando, about all our venues, about everything we have to offer, about how we have gotten to the point where we have gotten. And they were very interested in, well, not only helping or coming over and trying to develop their business over here, but also learning how we have done it. So it was a great experience. I'm going to have a more complete report. I just got in at 3 o'clock this morning, so it was hard to put everything together in a few hours. But there's much collaboration going on. The Governor, I want to thank particularly the Governor of Quindeo, which is the state where I went to, Governor Sandra Paola Hurtado. I want to also thank the 12 mayors who were present over there. Dr. Rafael Botero, he's an economist, and he's the one who put everything together, helped us putting everything together. We visit with most of the industries over there, agriculture, they have exotic fruits and whatnot, farmers, medicine doctors. In the academic side, we met with universities, approximately six universities, the construction industry, tourism, architects, scientists, scientists, and law enforcement. And it was, it was hard work, it was busy during those five days we were over there. But it was, the collaboration that I think we have started is great. We're going to see a lot more from Quindeo, and I hope we can establish some trade missions to start going over there. And they will be coming over here exhibiting on their expos. And I know they also have a great deal of, they want to learn how to do business with us, so we're going to hear more, and we have to go and get also with the government, because they want to know what they need to do from the different industries to start doing business, to start relocating and having businesses over here. So I think we're going to see a lot more of that. And Mayor, that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Commissioner, and we'll move to District 3. Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me start off with condolences to Jim Kersey on the passing of his wife, Miriam Kersey. Miriam was instrumental in many things around our city, involved in landscape as landscape architect, but also involved many years ago in the changes with Mayor Frederick around Lake Lock Haven. And so, it was a wonderful celebration of her life, and I just want to pass on my personal condolences to Jim and the family. A couple of things I want to kind of.
Not to interrupt you, but you want to tell the story about the tree in front of the Manalo that was told?
I'll tell it. So, Miriam was involved in Mayor Frederick's administration, had a lot to do, apparently, with the East-West Expressway, the B-line, I mean, the B-line, not the East-West. But, and Commissioner Stewart knows the history better than I do on the configuration of the road network over by Lock Haven Park. But when they extended Princeton to connect up with Mills, she was involved in that and recognized that the path that had been designed by the engineers would have taken down that big oak tree that is in front of the Manalo Museum, and she was instrumental in getting them to change the route and save that tree. So, the thought was that any time you drive by the Manalo Museum and see that beautiful tree out there, you should think of Miriam Kersey.
Thank you, Mayor. It's wonderful how our paths have crossed in many different ways with Miriam. But the wonderful green that we have down there that was, we thought was just a, some of us have been around for a while, used to be the road, is now just a wonderful green gathering place for that community. So, I haven't been driven by there without remembering Miriam and the work that she's had, impact on our community. Thank you, Mayor. One of the things, let me just cover a couple of things that we, the last couple of weeks. National Night Out, we had, I think, 18, 19, or 20 parties, I can't remember one of those. We got to almost all of them. Thank you so much for our community, for their response. I kept seeing, Chief Rooney, at the time I kept turning around, I kept seeing OPD out there, and they were just so, so grateful to have them have an appearance in the community. Park Lake Highland came in second this year over in our area, and they had a great party for about 30 minutes until the rains came through. And the, it was a really great way to gather our community together. Today is the first day of school in Orange County, so as the mayor mentioned, but it's also the reopening of Princeton Elementary. They've done a wonderful job with restoring the old school, as well as adding a whole new section of that school. I have a chance to be over there several times. My daughter-in-law Kristen's a teacher over there, and I had a chance to walk around and walk through some of my old classes and just share some old stories about Princeton Elementary. A wonderful heritage, they did a great job of that. I also want to say thanks to Carl Metzger and our, and our traffic engineering group with Frank Consoli. We have been struggling with trying to make sure that we have good, adequate transportation over there. They've done a great job with that, and I appreciate them working so closely with the school to make sure all of our kids are safe over there. So, thank you for that. And also, this past weekend was Commissioner Ortiz's birthday.
Oh.
So, I think, Mayor, we probably.
Absolutely. That totally got by me, Commissioner.
The mayor's birthday was also last.
That's right.
That's right, I forgot about yours, too.
I think we've had an intervening council meeting since mine. Let's sing for Commissioner Ortiz. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Commissioner Ortiz. Happy birthday to you.
Don't make the Orlando Weekly. Thank you very much. A couple of things, let me just conclude with, the Ivanhoe Villages having their after-hours event on Tuesday. Please come out and get a chance also to say our goodbyes to Kat Quest. Kat will be moving to the Midwest, I think, if I'm not correct, if I'm mistaken, and we're going to miss her. She's done a wonderful job over there with Audubon Park Garden District as well. So, she's going to be joining us there. Friday night, September 7th, check out the Lou Gardens movie, Mission Impossible. The Ghost Protocol will be there, so get a chance to come there. Also, the Orlando Museum of Art, we have their Art Adventures Program that's coming up, and then, of course, the Lock Haven Art District on September 9th. Come visit the Manalo Museum and get free admission from noon to 4:30. On the agenda today, let me say also a special thanks to Maiso Robotics. It's great to have them here. Thank you, Mayor, for your commitment to our partnerships, both here and abroad, and bringing them here. What a wonderful way to continue those partnerships. Later on in the agenda, I'll just share it now. We had our fifth opening of Wawa in our community, and today on the agenda, as a reminder, is the annexation of the one in the Silver Star Road. I had a chance to go to its dedication or to its grand opening. It is the 600th Wawa store, and it was really great to be there. Chief Rooney was there. They were falling over themselves about how well they had been cared for by the City of Orlando. I will share one thing, which I thought was interesting. The president of Wawa stopped me and told me that he had had a meal or was visiting with Governor Christie of New Jersey, and asked Governor Christie, asked him, "Why weren't they opening more Wawas in New Jersey?" And he made a comment to say that from the start to finish, from the time they find a piece of property, the time they open a store in New Jersey because of the government regulation, was three years. We've done five in less than six months. And so, he loves what we're doing in Central Florida and how business-friendly we are, and especially our response. And so, I appreciate that, appreciate the work of Dean Grant and his staff to stay on top of that and making each one of these very special. So, thank you very much, Mayor. That's all that I have.
Right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second, who had the second? Second by Commissioner Lyman. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, let's see, let's recess the city council meeting and convene the CRA meeting. And while Thomas is coming up, I'm going to go ahead and take Item 7, which is the CRA Board Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Second, motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Stewart, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 8 is accepting the meeting minutes from the CRA Advisory Board. Is there a motion to accept those minutes? Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. All right, let's move to the top of the agenda with number 1. Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon to you, sir, and commissioners and ladies and gentlemen. Item number 1 is approval of the Minority of Women Entrepreneur Business Assistance Program, or MIBA, assignment of Draft Global Beer Lounge and Grill. On April 11th of last year, the CRA approved $40,000 in MIBA funding for the 301 at 333 West Church Street Station LLC doing business as Draft Global Beer Lounge and Grill. Since that time, the business ownership structure has shifted, and the former minority owner, RIH Draft LLC, has now become the majority owner of Draft Global Lounge and Grill. The CRA Advisory Board recommends and staff is requesting that the CRA consent for the Chairman of the CRA to execute an assignment and assumption of the MIBA Assistance Program Funding Agreement and Security Agreement. This is also consistent with the June 18, 2012 lease assignment that our city council granted.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 2, Thomas.
Thank you, sir. Number 2 is approval of MIBA Default Committee Recommendation. On October 3rd of 2011, CRA awarded L3 LLC doing business as Oopsie Scoopse. Oopsie Scoopse, excuse me. MIBA funding in the amount of up to $14,895 for various purposes. On or about July 10th, 2012, CRA staff became aware that Oopsie Scoopse was no longer in compliance with that agreement. As a result, as a result of the fact that no MIBA funds were ever distributed to Oopsie Scoopse, there are no repayments due to the CRA. However, by virtue of Section 8, the default section of the MIBA Funding Agreement, the Default Committee voted and recommends that the CRA terminate the MIBA Funding Agreement with L3 LLC doing business as Oopsie Scoopse.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 3, Thomas.
Thank you, sir. And Mayor and Commissioners, Items 3, 4, 5, 6, and 9 all pertain to consent agenda item F1, which is the home funds that you just approved for the Callahan Oaks. As stated to you by Commissioner Lyman, Callahan Oaks apartment complex is a 40-unit multifamily rental development situated on Jefferson Street in Paramore. The land, as the Commissioner stated, is of the development, is owned by the CRA. The Orlando Neighborhood Improvement Corporation, known as ONIC, is the tenant and currently has a ground lease with the CRA that expires in 2038. ONIC has created a. ONIC has created a wholly-owned subsidiary, ONIC-Callahan Oats LLC, that will operate and maintain the apartment complex. ONIC wishes to rehabilitate the Callahan Oats Apartment Complex, including masonry, landscaping, painting, energy efficiency upgrades, and rehab of the units. To accomplish this, ONIC will be utilizing various sources of funding, including, as you just approved, portions of the City of Orlando's allocation of home funds. Item number three is an assignment and assumption of the lease and consent to assignment to ONIC-Callahan Oats LLC for Callahan Oats. CRA Advisory Board recommends and staff requests that the CRA approve the assignment of ground lease from ONIC to ONIC-Callahan Oats LLC, subject to review and approval of the City Attorney's Office, and authorize the chairman and executive director of the CRA to execute assignment of that lease.
Mayor, can I take three, four, five, six, and nine with one motion?
Yes. Move approval. Second.
Okay. Commissioner Lyman has moved items three, four, five, six, and nine as a package as they relate to the same subject matter. Second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Any further business come forward to CRA, Thomas?
That gets me.
Then we will, without objection, adjourn the CRA meeting. We will, there's no OPEB meeting, so we will reconvene the city council meeting. And that brings us to a charter hearing to approve the purchase, well, let me set this up. In accordance with Chapter 13, Section 7 of the city charter, this will be a public hearing required in order for the city to purchase real property having a value which exceeds $3 million. Notice of the hearing appeared in the Orlando Sentinel on August 13th, 2012. Approve of the sale will require a majority vote of all members of the city council. Title to the property is held in the name of the Trust for Public Land of California Not-for-Profit Corporation. The property being purchased is located at 512, 522, 528, and 538 East Washington Street and 20 North Eola Drive in Orlando. The proposed seller is the Trust for Public Land. On October 19th, 2009, the city entered into an option for sale and purchase to acquire the property for $8.5 million plus carrying and closing costs. In doing so, the city paid $3 million, which will be applied against the purchase price at the time of the closing. City has concluded the fair market value of the property is $8.865 million. Lori Botts will give a brief history, and then Greg Cielis for the Trust for Public Land will give an update from their organization. Lori.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Just to give you a brief history of this, the five properties equal about 1.36 acres of property, and they're shown on the map. They were assembled by a real estate development company who were requesting approval through a GMP to construct a fifteen-story mixed-use office building on the site. And in response to community, the community expressed concerns over the plans for the redevelopment. Some concerns they expressed were that large-scale development on the east side of Lake Eola Park, there would be light and shadow impacts over the adjacent playground, the interruption of lake and park views, congestion and traffic flow, and the general redevelopment impact on the park. So as a result of this community interest in expanding Lake Eola Park, the city partnered with the Trust for Public Land to acquire the property and hold it for the city until we were in a position to acquire the property ourselves. Council approved the option agreement with the trust on October 19th of 2009. The Trust for Public Land then subsequently acquired all five parcels of land for $8.5 million on November 9th and 2009. Over the past three years, the trust has owned the property, and the buildings have been leased out to offset some of the expenses. The budget presented to council last month includes funds for the option agreement for the sale and purchase of property. Greg Chelius, who is a senior project manager for the Trust for Public Land, is here today to give you a few brief comments. Greg?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Congratulations on your awards and all the accomplishments. I live in Tallahassee and very, very impressed of what's going on in the city of Orlando. I am a bit envious, though. I row once in a while with the Tallahassee Rowing Club, and when I saw your facilities compared to our two-by-fours racks that we put the boats on outside, I definitely was a bit envious. But the last time I was here was when you voted to acquire a piece of property from the Trust for Public Land that we had acquired from CSX Railroad. And that had become, or has become now, a portion of the Orlando Urban Trail. And I was sorry I didn't have the time, but I missed the grand opening. And Becky Nielsen worked on that project, I worked on that project. CSX was a great partner, and I did go down there today and did see the trailhead. So congratulations on that, it was a great project. You know, at the same time we were working on that project, there was a proposal to build the office building that was seen here just a minute ago, and it was a community outcry that basically said, you know, instead of having a large-scale office building on Lake Eola, we would much rather that the property be acquired and that the park be expanded. And that's certainly something that's near and dear to our heart at the Trust for Public Land, where our mission is land for people. And so we were very happy to come in and work with the city. The developers who had the property were extremely cooperative. We did appraisals, and ultimately, we did buy the property, and we now own the property and have for three years. You'll be voting today to exercise an option that we have and acquire that property back from us. Anticipating a positive vote, I have met with all of the tenants that we have in the buildings, and they've been extraordinarily cooperative. And so I'm happy to say that we're working on, with them, if, should you decide to vote for acquisition of the property, we will be working very closely with them to vacate those houses. And at the same time, we're looking at the prospect of meeting with the community. So folks that may be interested in the houses that may, will not be preserved, perhaps could be moved. And so I'm more than happy to meet with the community and discuss that. If that's not the case, we also could look at architectural salvage, where you could save some of the components in those properties, and for the purpose of architectural preservation. But everything's gone very, very well. Right now, we're poised to work with you, should you vote yes to convey the property to you, and we hope that you do that, and ultimately, that there will be an expansion of Lake Eola Park. If you don't vote yes, and this is not a threat by any means, but the Trust for Public Land as a private company, what we would do is put the property back on the market and sell it for its highest and best use, and I would imagine you would ultimately see an office building that was proposed originally. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, I encourage you to vote yes, and let's do another great project for the city of Orlando.
Commissioner Sheen.
Well, and I'd just like to thank the Trust for Public Land, because you all have been an amazing partner, and again, working, you know, we were working on the urban trail, and then this all came up during that time, and it was a wonderful partnership. I want to thank you so much, because at the time, we didn't have the $8.5 million to do this. So we really appreciate you partnering and helping us, you know, move this forward. And I think that people really have to understand that, you know, I think there was, there's issues of historic preservation, different things like that, but I think the overall goal was to try to stop the large-scale development, which was very out of character with the area. And, you know, I'd like to do all things, but I have to tell you, we have eight and a half million dollars in the property right now, trying to keep everything as it is. You know, it's going to come off the tax rolls. There's just a lot of balls in the air right now, and I really, Mayor, I so much appreciate, because eight and a half million dollars during the worst budget years in the city of Orlando history is not an easy thing to do. I understand that. And I think the community needs to understand that this is a big deal, to be able to do this kind of a purchase in this kind of an economic climate. And we're going to do as much as we can to save as many of the buildings as possible, but it's just probably not going to be realistic that we can do it all. Again, we've had, you know, a lot of hits. Trying to maintain buildings is just, you know, on the property might not be the best thing for us to do. And it is the Trust for Public Land. It is, you know, they do want to get open spaces and things like that. And, you know, it's been very difficult, a lot of folks are very upset, you know, what about the buildings? Well, you know, I think we have to remember the overall, the greater good here, and that's, you know, getting 1.36 acres added to Lake Eola Park. There actually used to be houses all along Lake Eola Park on Central as well. And we, under Mayor Bill Frederick's administration, they had the foresight to go ahead and buy that corner, and which is now the International Plaza. So this is not like the first time we've ever acquired property and, you know, and expanded the park. It has happened in the past. And if you look at the map, there are some parcels, you know, in that area that are still privately owned. But this is an amazing opportunity for us to add to the park. I want to thank Rebecca Sutton and Lori Botts, because I know it's been, you know, tough to put that money. For Rebecca, I don't know where you found the money, but I'd say thank you, thank you, thank you. And Lori, you know, for working on the acquisition, and I know a lot of staff has worked on this. And, you know, we'll do what we can to be as sensitive as possible, but also understand that once this is in our control, then, you know, we can keep it in perpetuity for the citizens of Orlando. And I think this is a great legacy for this council to leave this city. You know, I'm blessed to have the, you know, the signature park in Orlando in my district. It's a gem, and I love it so much, and it's something that I have loved since I was a child. And I think just to be able to pass this on for perpetuity is just an amazing opportunity. So Mayor Dyer, thank you. I know this was not easy. And to my colleagues, I know that I'm getting a big chunk here, but I also understand that all of our citizens across, you know, the city come to this park for Fourth of July celebrations, for so many celebrations. It is our signature park, and I think this is a great investment. So, and to the Trust for Public Land, thank you so much for-
Thank you.
-carrying this for us for the last three years.
You bet.
Couldn't have said that any better, Commissioner Sheen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we do have several cards for public comment. Lori, I'm going to let you close after public comment, okay?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to remind council that today you're considering the, accepting the option for the agreement for the sale and purchase of the five lots on Lake Eola for $8.5 million plus carrying and closing costs. As far as the timing goes, if council approves this option agreement, then the trust will begin working with the tenants to relocate out of the space. The trust will also simultaneously open up and work with the community on the relocation of any of the structures, if that's possible. Parks will be working on a park plan for the site. The trust will, after any buildings are able to be relocated, they'll work on salvage and ultimately demolition, and then after that, the city will close on the property.
Thank you, Lori. And just, I heard a little rumor somewhere that some folks were nervous that the city was going to acquire the property and then commercially redevelop it. And let me just state, on the record, there is absolutely no truth whatsoever to that rumor. The plan is that that piece of property and whatever structures continue to exist would become a permanent part of the park. It's a wonderful opportunity we have to expand our signature park. I don't know that there's any other property that we could acquire that we would be able to add to the park. So let me just add my voice to Commissioner Sheen's in thanking the public trust for helping us accomplish that, because three years ago, we certainly were not in the position to do that. So you carried us along till we could get in a better financial position and close this acquisition. Okay, I do have three cards that I want to go ahead and call up, and they all appear to be proponents. So Greg Reynolds, Brett Jones, and then Joseph Cottarella.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you very, very much. I'm standing up here because I love Orlando, and Orlando to me is, I had an opportunity to stay back in a little town where I grew up, or moved here to where my great-grandparents used to have a house, and their house sat right there where the downtown Publix is. And so I kind of moved back to my roots here, and when I moved into the Waverly eight years ago, it wasn't because of it being the building that it is, which I love that building, but it was because of the location. I call Lake Eola Park my front yard. A lot of residents at the Waverly call it their front yard. Just happens that thousands and thousands and thousands of people also use that. And we very much love the interactive, the activities that happen at that park. The opportunity for the city is, I mean, just awesome for you guys to add that 1.36 acres and for you guys to have contiguous park in that area. Right now, it's divided, and I think that if you have that opportunity, and today you do have that opportunity, I hope that you'll take that opportunity and bring it forward. I do have two people that have sent emails to me asking me that I read them into the records of that.
Sure.
Okay. One of them is from Brian Fangman, and he is the board president at the Metropolitan on Lake Eola. He said he'd like to thank you, he would like to take the time to express his support for enhancing our beautiful Lake Eola Park. I have lived in downtown Orlando for thirteen years and have watched our city evolve into a thriving community. I believe that the Lake Eola Park is our very own version of New York's Central Park. Lake Eola is an icon of the, for Orlando, for both our citizens and visitors from all over the world. I am a strong proponent of individual property rights, and I would never recommend or be satisfied with an eminent domain action to take properties for this purpose. Since the city of Orlando already owns these properties, I think it is important to recognize the best use of this land. I think he meant that since you all were already working on the process. The people of Orlando can be better served as a whole through the expansion of our existing park. It is a rare opportunity to be able to expand parklands after years of significant buildup. So I see the timing for this to be important. While the homes that occupy this land are indeed beautiful, they are in need of repair. While everything has history, I do know that, I do not know of any compelling historical significance that would be a compelling argument. I am more concerned about applying tax dollars wisely and creating something that everyone can enjoy well into the future. This will be a significant historical moment in history. I would ask that the city planners will be thoughtful in their proposed use of this land to ensure that they are not sold for commercial interests like hotels or retail. Instead, we should recognize any historical significance of this great event and ensure the area is preserved as sanctuary up to support the variety of activities that take place at the lake. I appreciate you for taking the time to listen and your thoughts. Sincerely, Brian Fangman, the president of the Metropolitan. I also have another email that was sent to me to ask to be read, from Daisy Steniskis, and she is a resident at the Sanctuary Building in Eola South. She wholeheartedly supports the expansion of Lake Eola Park, our city's iconic public park in the heart of downtown. Jan and I walk around the park daily, sometimes twice a day, with our dogs. The park is always well-used, attracting people from all over the region. With numerous special events, festivities, and cultural gatherings, the park is under constant pressure for upkeep, and our parks crew do their job, a good job, in maintaining this public space. The city certainly can benefit greatly from adding more space for our citizens and our four-legged friends to enjoy. And that was from Daisy Steniski. Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for this opportunity, and I think this is historic, and I'd ask as a resident to expand our park.
Thank you, Greg. Brett?
I'll pass, I'm prepared.
So you wave in support. All right.
Your honor, your honor. Your honor, your honor.
I don't know if it's possible to have that map put up there, but I appreciate it. I'll try to be brief. We started with the slide. Mayor, my name is Joe Cottarella. I'm also a resident in the area and board president at 530 Central, one of our homeowners' associations in the area. We're very much proponent of what you're about to do today, both professionally and really personally proud of the city, that we've gotten to the point and that we have this on the agenda. We did work in opposition to some of the earlier plans, but in reality, the developer who proposed that has done the city a great service. And I think Jim Gray deserves some thanks there, because I know he personally worked on aggregating the land. And if that hadn't been done, and that was a lot of work, the city would have had a very difficult time ever adding to the park. And we can see from this map what an incursion that land is into the park and what it takes away. And I'm here also to urge the city to either move or resolve the buildings in some way that doesn't keep them where they are, because we see that there's a little spur of Washington Drive that juts down into the park there. At the very end of that, there's a dumpster that's not very attractive. But if that land becomes green space, then that part of the Washington becomes green space, and that park can just sweep on through. And we heard some positive comments, I think, from Commissioner Stewart about when the street was removed over there in Lock Haven, and how we got this beautiful green space, the green there that's so attractive. We have an opportunity to remove that little bit of Washington, and of course, these houses, and create a beautiful green space that sweeps all the way from Central and Eola and all the way through. I know there's been some requests from Park Department to perhaps use a building for offices, and unfortunately, probably the most- use a building for offices. And unfortunately, probably the most attractive, although everybody has their own favorite, building is the one that's nearest to the lake. But if you kept that building, you'd have to keep the whole bit of Washington. The whole street would have to come down there to serve the building. If there was any building that should be kept, it's the one that's address 20 Eola Drive, because it doesn't need Washington to serve it at all, but it fronts completely onto Eola Drive. It's right about where the little arrow for the word "site" hits. So, you can see that there's a, there's a building that doesn't front on Washington at all. But even that would break up the park space. But if we had to keep a building, I would strongly urge that it be the one that doesn't require keeping Washington itself. And again, I recognize the two buildings closest to the lake are probably the two most beautiful, but there may be different opinions on that. But we would like to see that green space. Very, very proud of the city, very much in favor of it. Commissioner Sheehan, I know the mayor worked hard to put together a possible budget deal. As a government employee, I've done payable deduction for years with the Trust for Public Land. I never thought I'd see a personal benefit from it.
[laughing]
But my father used to do that, and he said, "You really should give to these people." And now, they've really stepped up to their mission in a way that hits home in our front yard. So, it appears that everybody today is proponents. So, I think I'll say in advance, I'm very proud of us for doing that. And it's a long time coming, but this, this is a great public service. When we were talking about whether or not to have a building there, we had some pictures that we, that we showed to the Orlando Sentinel of the great parks in Chicago, and the great parks in New York, and these great parks in London, all these beautiful green spaces in the city centers. And now, we have a chance to expand our green space. And thank you so much for the efforts, Commissioner Sheehan. And I realize that everybody's worked on this and has given up perhaps money they'd like to see somewhere else. And Commissioner Gray for his efforts. And Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, that was, I'll close the public hearing portion of this. Is there a motion to approve, Commissioner Sheehan?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. Lori, did you have anything else you needed to enlighten us with? Okay, then, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And so, the motion carries. Note that Commissioner Gray abstained from that vote, as he had indicated before. Although, actually, you benefited from the other transaction, not this one necessarily, but out of abundance of caution. That's probably the right thing to do. Okay, congratulations. Let's move to hearings. Greg, thank you so much. All right, let's move to hearings. Ordinance is second reading, number one, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to the Land Development Code, amending Sections 58.1100, 58.1104, 61.342, 62.502, 62.505, and 62.506, Orlando City Code, as it relates to street-level commercial use areas in downtown, providing updated terminology, minimum street-level design standards for certain areas of downtown, allowable uses within mandatory street-level commercial use areas, exceptions for certain existing buildings, technical amendments, and correcting cross-references, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances and actions, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Haines, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida annexing to the corporate limits of the City of Orlando, Florida certain real property generally located at the southeast corner of Silver Star Road and north John Young Parkway, comprised of 8.37 acres more or less, and amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as industrial on the city's official future land use map, and designating the property as industrial commercial district with the Wakava overlay district on the city's official zoning map series, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida designating certain real property generally located the northeast corner of Narcusi Road and the Beachline Expressway, State Road 528, and comprised of 29.14 acres more or less, as AC1 on the city's official zoning map, as requested by the property owner, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number four, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the growth management plan to amend future land use policy 1.5.2, providing for severability and an effective date.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number five, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida rezoning certain land generally located north of West Robinson Street, east of North Paramore Avenue, south of West Colonial Drive, and west of Interstate 4, comprised of approximately 68 gross acres of land, from PTPH in part, IGTPH in part, and MXD2TPH in part, to PDTPH on the city's official zoning map series, providing special and develop, land development regulations for the PD zoning district, directing amendment of the city's official zoning map series, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Let's move to ordinances on first reading, Madam Clerk. And a roll-off franchise, number one.
Yes. An ordinance of the City of Orlando granting Celebrations Sanitation Services, LLC, a non-exclusive franchise to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of solid waste within the City of Orlando, outlining franchisees' duties, providing the terms and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for severability and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Haines, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number two.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the city's growth management plan by changing the future land use map designation on property generally located north of West Oak Ridge Road, south of I-4, east of the Florida Turnpike, and west of Millennium Boulevard, comprised of 9.94 acres more or less, from office medium intensity to mixed-use corridor high intensity, directing amendment of the city's official future land use map series, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Haines. Is there anyone from the public like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida annexing to the corporate limits of the City of Orlando, Florida certain real property generally located north of the Beach Line, State Road 528, south of Lee Vista Boulevard, and east of Narcusi Road, comprised of 9.4 acres more or less, and amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as industrial on the city's official future land use map, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have a quasi-judicial hearing. Dean, if you come up, is the appellant
Mayor?
Present?
The appellant is not here. You can certainly choose to proceed. But having failed to otherwise make a preservation, a presentation, or preserve the time period by requesting an extension, you're within your rights to consider that he has abandoned or waived his appeal. It's really up to the council how you want to proceed.
Dean, what do you know about the appellant and why he would not be here?
I don't know. We reached out to the appellant. He was aware of the meeting today. He perhaps decided that there was no reason to be here.
He is elderly and in poor health, as I understand it. He is a World War II veteran with some health issues.
Commissioner Sheehan, I know that you're fully aware and briefed on this matter. I'm inclined to modify the order to give a period of time to comply, given the financial hardship of the homeowner, but I would like your thoughts.
Yeah, the only concern I've got about that is that, I'm more concerned about the contractor, to be quite honest, because this contractor has a history of going around the historic districts and not pulling permits, because they know, and they, and they do this in defiance of our code. And I think this gentleman was probably a victim of that. But the bottom line is, if we set precedent for allowing this to occur, this is going to keep happening, and we have historic districts for a reason. We have these requirements for a reason. And, you know, I'm just concerned about watering down the very thing that the majority of the residents in the area have voted on. And, you know, I, probably not as many people feel as passionately as I do about historic preservation, but I think we have to be careful about eroding that. Now, I don't have a problem, but I want it to be very narrowly crafted, that this man was a victim of an unscrupulous contractor. I would like for us to try to tighten our code on these contractors that do this work in defiance of our code. And then, there doesn't seem to be anything I can do about that. That's the difficulty. I mean, they come in here, don't pull a permit, and there's no, and there's no teeth in that. I have more of a problem with the contractors going in.
I understand.
So, and again, this was not done just without a historic permit. This was done with no building permit.
Dean?
Yes, if I could. And you're rightfully concerned, Commissioner Sheehan, we are as well with regard to contractors. In this particular case, Mr. Williams actually instructed the contractor not to pull a permit. And he admitted to that at the quasi-judicial hearing. So, it's a slightly different twist on your concern. But the contractor should have known better and insisted on pulling a permit anyway.
If, Mayor, if
Mayan?
Most, this is a generalization, so there are exceptions. Most historic, historic preservation codes have hardship provisions throughout the code for the obvious reason, but not just because that is humane and allows more options, but also because that heightens enforceability. And I think everybody knows, we've always had concerns about a direct attack on the enforceability of our historic preservation code. We have long recommended that hardship provisions be extended to all the provisions of the code. There is not a hardship provision in this particular section, although we recommended that there be one. You certainly are within, well, within your rights to extend a hardship, whether the applicant was initially in transigen or not. It still represents a substantial financial commitment for a veteran on fixed income, to our understanding. We haven't taken depositions about his net worth, but that seems to be a fair representation. And further, we, we might just want to think collectively about whether, in our normal course of looking at statutes and making amendments to our land use provisions, if we don't want to extend hardship provisions throughout the code. Commissioner Sheehan is exactly right. If you go too far, you could set up abuse. But if you, if you let us draft you some standards, so it wouldn't just be, you just decide someone's got a hardship. But we could put in some standards that, that the groups looking at this would have to really consider and have some finding for. I think that would address the concerns that Commissioner Sheehan has, that we don't, you know, riddle the code with exceptions. So, just a thought in that regard, perhaps for future consideration by the council.
Well, and again, I mean, I know that I'm picky about windows and things like that, probably more so than most people, but I think these do look dreadful. And especially over the port cachere, over the, that, those just look awful. So, I mean, and they don't match at all what they, what those windows used to look like. So, I mean, I have no problem with the time thing, if we want to do that based on his age. But I also would like to say that you give him time, but if the property, for some reason, in that, within that timeframe, also is sold or whatever, that it has to be brought up to code. So, not only are we giving a time option, but if, for some reason, if the man passes or something like that, and if the property's passed on, I don't want to pass on this timeframe to someone else who could then defy the code, so to speak.
We could do, if you would like.
Then, hey, Mayan, let me try this, then. How about if I accept a motion from Commissioner Sheehan to adopt the recommended order with modification, giving the applicant five years to replace the 21 windows, or if the property is transferred upon death or sale, that they be, come into compliance immediately?
I would second that one.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Lyman. Mayan, is that proper form, or as close as I can get it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I, but I would like to say that if this, if we just start getting a bunch of old folks coming in here saying, "I did this, oops, I did this," I'm not going to be very happy.
Well, I don't
Okay.
I hadn't thought about this, but do we not have any penalty on a contractor that has a occupational license in the city of Orlando that does work without pulling a permit?
No, sir, we don't right now.
That's a huge problem, Mayor. I'm just telling you right now, that's a huge problem that I'm having with a lot of this historic work and certificate of appropriateness and stuff that's being done without a permit. These contractors go in knowing full well what their, what the requirements are, and they do it in defiance of the code.
Well, certainly, they, and maybe this circumstance is a little different, but, you know, your typical homeowner may or may not know all the ins and outs of what permits they need and that type of stuff. But a contractor that's doing that work every day certainly does.
That's right. Yeah. Mayor Dyer, Kyle Shepard, Assistant City Attorney. We don't right now in our code. Staff has discussed this before, because we do, as Commissioner Sheehan says, have a problem with contractors that know the rules, but for a variety of reasons, either because their client asks them to, or just because they're trying to save a few dollars, does not come in and get the appropriate permits. We do have statutory means available to us, but we do need to think about incorporating those into our code. And it's something that, with your permission, we'll look at a little bit more, but we have been looking at this.
Mayan, I'd like to follow, have staff follow up on that.
Yeah, and Mayor, we had the same problem with the air conditioners, you know, because there was a, there was a problem with, with, with the same thing. And I mean, I'll be the first one to admit that I hired a contractor. I didn't know any better. I wasn't on council at the time. I had to move my air conditioning unit. So, you know, I mean, there are people that do this stuff in defiance of the code. And I did not know that my contractor did not pull a permit. I paid him to. So, there is situations where, you know, you might not know any better, and I understand that. But that's, that doesn't seem to be what happened here. He did say he'd do it in defiance of the situation. But I'm willing, you know, to give him, you know, the good graces because he's elderly and, you know, whatever. But, but again, you know, I, I think we need to have more teeth in the code when it comes to these contractors who've just come in and don't do the right thing.
Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. That concludes the official business of the day, and we have no general appearances, so we are adjourned.